And we are live.
So, we will call this meeting to order, yeah, with the roll call.
Good evening Commissioners, staff and members of the public. I will be conducting the roll call for the special meeting for the Parks Wellness and Recreation Commission of September 21st, 2021. Chair Jason Hayes.
Present.
Commissioner Nina Herrera.
Present.
Commissioner Joe Ponce.
All right, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance, if you'll please stand. Hand over your heart and begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, we'll have approval of the agenda. Any questions, comments, concerns? Great, well then let's remember our decorum in order and begin with our public statements. We have Mr. Rudy Ortega. Right over there, sir, thank you.
Thank you Commissioners, I came to speak on an art mural that the tribe is presenting, that we presented before the Arts Commission, Arts Committee, that we want to have the mural done, I believe it's 301 South McLei, which is the old financial building, just south of the mall. It's a two-story red brick building currently right now. The history that we want to articulate on there, one, the artist is a Fernando de los Fabiam descendant, enrolled tribal citizen, and what we want to do is a timeline from pre-Mission to Mission era to contemporary to now. That includes history of San Fernando as well into the art piece, but it really depicting the tribal history starting prior. And I know the Arts Commission, Arts Committee has some of the artists' rendering that he has done. He has done a couple murals around the world. Unfortunately, we didn't have enough time for him to really articulate or put into a depiction of what the mural would look like. He's still working on it, his name is Stanley Nacha Salazar, and we're still proposing that. What we're looking and shooting for was to have the unveiling on Indigenous Peoples' Day, which is the second Monday of October, hopefully on that Sunday. But, as I spoke to the Arts Committee, if that's not undoable and we do need to have the artist rendition first, the tribe's willing to work with the Parks Commission and the city as well, to, you know, articulate the painting so that everyone knows transparently what that will look like and we could definitely move the date. But that's what I was, I wanted to present, I know they have some pieces of artwork to present of his artwork of Stanley. He currently has his art gallery in New Mexico, and he's looking, you know, to fly in and do this mural with his son. And as well, we were planning to get some of the youth, that we have a program called Tuchint, that we wanted to have some of the artists, those students, participate in the painting of the mural as well. So that's what I came to discuss and present before you. Any questions or, other than that, I'm done.
Awesome, great, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Ortega, appreciate it. Next item is our selection of a vice chair, and I'll entertain a motion to postpone. We have discussed this and considered that, it was Mr. Ponce brought it up, actually, I think it's a great idea to postpone electing a vice chair for the time being until we have four or five Commissioner Media, Commissioners. Because with, with only three Commissioners, in the event of my absence, we don't have quorum and we can't have a meeting anyway. So, once we get at least another, a fourth, hopefully a fifth as well, and, and so, I'll entertain a motion to postpone until we have four members.
I make a motion to postpone.
One second. All in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. And I'd like to take a moment to, maybe we can pressure our council a little bit to like, because I know it's been a while since they've appointed our new seats, there's been a lot on their plate, but we could really use the extra voices for the city.
Staff will elaborate to the city clerk and to the council members who do not have anybody on the commission right now, letting them know that there is vacancies and they could appoint.
Great, thank you. Any comments Commissioner Herrera?
No comments.
Commissioner Ponce?
And here.
Okay, great. And we'll move on to our cultural arts liaison report, is Mr. Herrera here, no?
He's not here tonight.
Okay. Our consent calendar, request to approve the minutes from the August 10th, 2021 Parks Wellness Recreation Commission meeting.
Put him off for a quick minute.
A second.
Hey, discussion, comments, questions?
And here.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. All right, our administrative report, discussion regarding San Fernando Mesoamerican Ballgame Association, do you have anything on that?
Yes, the report that is in the agenda packet gives a timeline of when the Mesoamerican Ballgame Association started here in the city. The, the idea or the discussion was brought up by cultural arts liaison Herrera, excuse me Herrera.
It is.
It is, I said it right, yeah. Oh, we have two of them, yeah, yeah, thank you. To look at possibly, oh, here he is, good. To talk about possibly partnering with the city to look into finding a home court per se, or a home site, so the, the team, the association could have, could host games, could host tournaments and so forth. There is, and the idea was to look for a site within the city of San Fernando to do that and to go ahead and partner with the city. In order for the association to partner with the city, we would need to go into a non-licensed, non-exclusive In order for the association to partner with the city, uh, we would need to go into, into a non-licensed, um, non-exclusive license agreement in which the city, uh, gives permission for the association to use a city facility. That is, if the site selected is a city facility, then we could enter into that agreement. Um, if it's a little facility, says a private facility, then, um, that agreement would have to be made with the landowner, whoever, you know, they want to do that. Um, so, uh, with that, I'd like to invite Raoul Herrera to give a little bit more color on his proposal and his ideas about a site that he's looking at and, the, uh, the Mezzo-American Ballgame partnership with the, with the city of San Fernando.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Herrera of Cultural Arts Liaison. I do want to bring up a potential space that was discussed at a prior meeting in reference to possibilities of opening up a park or different potential sites for parks. And we're hoping in that transition of that space, um, applying a part of that space where we had overhead covering that could be used not only as a ball court for the sport ulamalisli, but that could also, when we're not playing ulamalisli, it's also accessible as an outdoor cover space in, in the community so that it has multiple uses, right, depending so that it's almost, uh, it's again, it's the ball court, we need the shade because in the San Fernando Valley, uh, it does get really hot and, and the pavement, we've had to kind of, quote unquote, modify some of the regulations such as wearing gloves. Because when it comes down to pavement, if it's ninety degrees, the pavement is a little bit hotter than ninety degrees. And we usually play barefoot, so now we're having players play with sneakers. And so, we're trying to keep it as traditional as possible, uh, I mean, we would like dirt, but dirt also requires maintenance and requires also a lot of aspects of having to always refill it. It has to be right, the right kind of soil so that way it doesn't have too many rocks, et cetera. So, um, we, 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 we know that even traditionally, we had things made out of, uh, out of brick, right, uh, tiles, uh, stone, uh, you know, cement. So, in some ways, you know, we can contemporary kind of give an essence of that, but we are also looking at these outdoor coverings also being some type of solar lighting to light up the park itself. So, there's multiple uses of hopefully trying to kind of acquire the space where it has plants that are indigenous to the space as well. And it has some ability where we can have the drinking fountain, that somehow the poles in itself would, uh, be adaptable to even adding a hoop. So that way, we can add a hoop when we needed it, at a level that we needed it, uh, to replace and also remove it or lock it into place. So that way, it's, uh, when it's not being utilized, that, um, that it's not going to be, it's not going to walk away, right? And so, uh, we are hoping that if that transition space is somewhere right here, uh, we saw a space that's a park, I think it's right in front of, I don't want to say the business name, but, but I think it's the Truman. In front of KFC, there's a big open vacant lot, it, it seems like it used to be a parking lot or a vacant lot, if I'm not mistaken, that's where Jungle Chickens used to be. If you remember, um, some of the old spaces there, right, uh, that, that's a, that's a big space there, uh, which is long enough, right, uh, for us to be able to, I would require to, to get the measurements, the details regarding that. I don't have that, you know, right now with me, but, um, but hopefully, I know that in that space, there was also talks about having an outdoor, uh, theater space, right? And so, that outdoor shade, when we're not playing ulamalisli, can also be a performance stage, it could also be an outdoor covering space for, for, for the park. If it's worked around, you know, it's additional seating space, so if we can kind of modify something like that, you know, and the city is willing to, to, to help us envision something that could also benefit the players. You know, just reimagining the space to be more, uh, multipurpose useful and beneficial to a community. We definitely would like to be able to do, uh, more events, uh, and, and I'm hoping that if we got to that, to that state, uh, and then wants the court to kick off some type of an operation is obviously reach out to Tabias. And hopefully, uh, being able to get, uh, you know, uh, the acknowledgement and blessing of that space, but in addition to that, is also kicking off the first, um, United States, uh, national tournament. And then we would invite that, uh, we would invite all of the other delegations to, to perform or rather compete here, you know, so, and, and kind of promoting this space. So we would be able to, uh, you know, not only do practices and training for youth conferences, youth groups, but we would also be able to coordinate scrimmages and, uh, tournaments and, uh, for, for, uh, the sport itself. So, uh, we're hoping that again, um, that we can envision something that is going to benefit us all. And something that's going to be, uh, also help us continue to play this sport. Because this is an old sport, this is a sport that's approximately four thousand years old. And, uh, this is the, uh, this is the oldest sport to, to utilize a run of ball, and it's a good reason to this kind of thing. So, San Fernando has been, uh, a great leader, a role model to other, uh, movements, you know, that have really, uh, kicked off indigenous identity. And so, I, I would like to see if we can be the first city in the United States to have, um, the first ball court, you know, the first contemporary ball court, an official ball court recognized by the city. And that would be a really great landmark for the city as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, questions, comments, Commissioner Herrera?
Um, none right now.
Commissioner Ponce?
Yes, Julie, uh, I'm trying to remember, we had a conversation about the property, we were speaking about the one in front of, uh, the one in front of, can take it for a, yeah.
Uh, yes.
Partial, I believe, is part of, it's owned by the city, and I believe the other part is owned, a section is owned by a family here in San Fernando, is that true?
Uh, if, if the land that Raoul is talking about is the one that is, um, across the street from the, what used to be the Jungle Chicken, uh, that is partially owned. Uh, that partial land, there's a parcel of land there, uh, it's owned, uh, by a, a, a family and also by another business here in, in San Fernando. Um, let me shed a little light on the idea that Raoul had, was speaking about. Uh, early on, when we were applying for a cycle for of the statewide park development grant, the POP sixty-eight, uh, we had different ideas, different parcels of land that we were thinking of re, of developing. During the course of the application process, we find it more beneficial to move with the renovation of the existing parks of that need. Uh, the development of a park at that, at that location was put on hold. They said, let's hold on that idea, uh, and it would be better beneficial for us to, uh, target our existing parks for the renovation. So, the idea of developing that particular site into a park, uh, was put on hold and the idea of having all the amenities that Raoul described were going to be part of the grant application. So, in that particular case, that land is, uh, no longer available, uh, for the grant application. So, right now, um, to, we, Raoul is proposing that we look at some type of land, uh, that, uh, we could develop the court. Uh, is that right?
Uh, yes, uh, but at the same time, if the, the city owns part of that parking lot, uh, to be honest with you, that, and since that space is actually closed, that space also becomes a practical place for us to, to hit a ball that weighs eight pounds. And, and, and so, uh, we're not really able to, to, to play in the basketball courts because it's for basketball players. We're really not able to play at, at, at baseball fields because they're for baseball players. We're not able to play in the soccer fields because the ball doesn't bounce in the grass, right? Um, but we do have, um, this open space that it can be an available space if it, if we do have access to play, right, um, you know, during the week, right? So, and, and it's not being used, but we can use that space to play that ball game. And, and it doesn't put anybody or any cars, right, at risk because, um, it, it's a big open space that is enclosed with chain link fence and it's a parking lot. It's cemented, and so, um...
Okay, the, the...
I'm just getting a little confused as to...
Yes, the land you're talking about is not owned by the city. That, that is not owned by the city at all.
Yeah, I'm a little confused as to which, which one are we talking about? The one where Jungle Chickens sit, used to sit at or the one across the street by, by, uh, right there on Kelisher and San Fernando...
Right.
Talking about that one there, there's good properties there.
The one that's dirt, right? Yeah, I, they're all within that same street?
Okay, okay, um, here's, here's, I think there's, we're jumping way ahead. I think before we can even develop a, um, the idea of developing, uh, a, a site for a court, um, there needs to be a first in, um, an agreement between the association and the city, okay, to enter to a partnership. That does not exist yet, okay? So that is the first step to start talking about how the, uh, the association and the city will work together to promote Mezzo-American ballgame, okay? That's the very first step. The next step is identifying a, a parcel of land that will meet the needs of the association, okay? That is fine, once you identify it. Then the third step is how are you going to acquire the funds to make your court, to purchase the land and to do any of that particular financial aspects of the idea you have. Uh, city-owned land is very scarce, there's hardly, um, uh, you know, like you said, everything is, has its space. So, i- if you want to develop, uh, a space exclusively for the thing, then, uh, you, you need to find out, well, you need to come back, you know, get, get there, say, whose land is it? Uh, if, if it's, if it's available for sale and then how are you going to raise the money to pay for that development? So, there, there's several layers that need, need to be done. If you identify a spot within the park, that could be done relatively quickly, okay? If an existing park meets the needs, that could be done relatively quickly with the, um, with a, um, non-exclusive use agreement. Uh, and then if any modifications are needed or tweaking that are not drastic, that is, you know, more, more likely, a lot more feasible to do. But a new court, uh, is, um, or a court exclusively someplace else rather than inside a park is going to be, um, a lot more laborious in getting that, that done.
I see a couple of, uh, a couple of questions come up. I mean, the, I, I, what Julian's mentioned, right, about the budgetary impact of, of creating a court. I, I actually love the idea of creating an undercover court, pardon me, that can double as an entertainment space, as a family food space, as a theater space, I mean, that, and ultimately as the court, and I think that's a great idea. That is obviously a conversation that has to be at the city hall, uh, the city council level to involve next, you know, the budget planning and maybe applying for grants to do said renovation of some sort. If you're talking about finding a place to practice, I was going to bring up that too, I'm glad you brought that up, the non-exclusive use agreement. Because, you know, they're, pick a, pick a spot, pick a, pick a park, we'll find a, you know, it, it sounds like, I don't, while I don't know the, the physics of the ball and what it needs to bounce, but maybe there's a space to practice that can be used in the meantime. I think long-term, I love the idea of trying to find, uh, a, a place to build a multipurpose space specific to housing the Mezzo-American Ball Association as well as being used for other things. And so then that comes around to what do you need from us right now? Is it, is the ball, is the Mezzo-American Ball Association, which I know you're a part of, but are they asking us as a commission to help them in acquiring a practice space and/or look for grants to fund it? Are they looking for our verbal support, going to city council to ask for funding to do it? What is being asked of us? Because I, I don't think anybody here would object to the, I mean, we, we've all talked very positively about the game and having, and the way it's being represented. You've done an amazing job going down with our sister city and everything else, but what do you need from the commission, I guess is my question.
Okay, and I think with that, what I'm going to do is I'm going to generate questions and a list of things that specifically are going to be needed, um, from, from the city. Uh, I, I know for sure we would like to be able to establish a practice place, I, I would have to, you know, coordinate that, I know with Julian, um, in reference to, uh, maybe, um, understanding with the zoning laws and, I know that, uh, Jerry is, is somebody who, I could maybe reach out and, and speak to.
Yeah, yeah, probably.
Maybe assist me in that process, right? Because, um, I, I know that there's other elements that I might probably not be familiar as to who could be my to-go people, but, uh, I, I would think in reference to asking the city for help, um, if you know that there's a particular person I should be speaking with in reference to who, what to do or who to reach out to for a specific thing, then, then that's what I'm asking, you know? Help me be able to, um, develop the resources and the contacts so that I can then speak with him or her on, on the subject as to, um, what I then need to present, uh, to, to the city or to the commissioners, uh, later.
Cool.
So that I have a well-proposed, a well-written proposal that is not going to, um, I don't know. I don't want, I don't want, I don't want to...
Yeah, I would also ask like what, what size space, like what's the court dimensions, but beyond just the court, what do you need for spectators? Like what is that kind of, those, that, that...
I have those dimensions already written out on, on paper.
Great.
Uh, so, I do have that, I have acquired that, I've even gotten some examples of, um, overhead, you know, um, you know, shedding, uh, things like that, I've submitted that, I did to Julian, but I can always resubmit that to the, to the, to the commissioner and to the city. You know, as to what that could potentially look like. And so, uh, similar to, uh, again, very simple poles that just kind of anchor over and create check, but also become, um, solar panels, you know, for, for lighting up the park, for the park community. I want to say a smart part, but, uh, the substitution, you know, lighting.
I think the, the most important first or the first step has to be with, um, the establishing the need of the association, okay? What is exactly what the association, um, is requesting or asking from, from the city, okay? Uh, the commission here cannot or, 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 yeah, cannot, uh, allocate or, you know, suggest any type of expenditures on the city's behalf, okay? They could definitely guide, uh, the, uh, the discussion and looking for how would a particular court, how would it be funded, how, how we get done? Looking at partnerships with other, um, agencies, uh, grants and all that stuff that, um, with, but they, they, the commission itself cannot, uh, incur that expense. And, and if, uh, give you ideas of how to develop that, uh, so you, when your proposal, you said, okay, we're going to build a court, we want to use it, for example, at that particular land that you're talking about. This is how we're going to pay for it, this is how we're going to, uh, do it, and this is our plan. And then you present that particular plan to the commission and they could, you know, vote on it and, and move it forward to, to the city council. Um, in regards to your asking, who can I talk to regarding what, you know, what your ideas are, how to do that? The best, uh, person that I think you could talk is talk to me first. Let's talk about what your ideas are, look at, uh, a possible, uh, practice site that, uh, you could serve as a practice site, possibly game sites in the meantime before that. Because developing a court, home court, park type of situation is a, a goal, but it cannot be accomplished within this year. but it cannot be accomplished within this year, maybe next year, you know, that that's.
Long-term?
It's long-term because you, we don't know what it's going to cost, we don't know um the land available. But I think what we need is sit down and talk about what your ideas are and look what could serve in the meantime, and then set um a a plan together to get a court here in San Fernando, okay?
Great, um I'd like to go back and check in since um Mr. Herrera is here and check in to see if there's any beyond what we just discussed with the with the Mesoamerican Ball Association. Is there anything else to report along the lines of your cultural arts report?
Um, well, we are going to be presenting at the San Fernando Day of the Dead uh community festival.
Yep.
Uh we are, uh I'm also a member of the community, uh I'm one of the the founders of 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 the event and of the San Fernando Cultural Arts Collective, which designs and promotes it at the community level. So if you've ever seen the flyers, the banners, um I designed them, you know, um as as the behalf of, you know, San Fernando Cultural Arts Collective as well. Uh so we are going to be presenting there, um we are gonna, we are growing as an association. Uh we um are are getting recognized uh uh not only at the state level, at the city, right? Uh different cities, different communities. Um uh we we've been doing a lot of workshops, even through the pandemic, we did virtual workshops. We tried to stay productive, we did lose a lot of membership, but you know, uh but yet we were still productive and trying to educate people virtually, the podcasts, uh informing and educating the people, promoting the sport. Uh we are doing pop-ups, uh practices in different parts of the San Fernando Valley to continue to hopefully reach out to community. Uh uh but uh I I I, you know, I think, you know, I think that's where 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 we're doing a lot of, we'll be this Saturday Sherman Oaks, uh and then we'll be at also Hollywood Forever this year, um and so.
And for the, just so we have it on on our record, the the San Fernando Day of the Dead celebration here is going to be what day and date?
It's October the thirtieth uh at San Fernando Park.
The Saturday.
Uh yeah, it'll be uh yeah, October the thirtieth. And so that's, that event is supposed to be from ten AM to four PM.
And and you had, um if I remember correctly, to, there there's an application process to put their alteras and et cetera?
Uh if people do want to reach out and build uh their ofrendas, or they want to be a vendor or an exhibiting artist, they do have to reach out to the park and call the the number that is on on the flyer. And so people will usually um call um call the park and then um everybody is lead directly to the park.
And those flyers are going up around the city, but are they going up on our social, on the city's social media, et cetera?
I don't know if they're circulating to social media, I'm sorry, to the city's website yet. Uh because I know that we just recently upgraded some uh some logos. Uh so we usually throw out a teaser flyer, um you know, you know, and and then and then just, you know, promote the community organizations that are are already, you know, have invested in organizing. And then from there, uh as people start to uh to join, uh then we start to add and and develop the logos there. And I know that I am going to be uh emailing some of the logos today um to the city, uh so.
Great.
And so I know that uh they've been promoted on social media. Uh we do have people that are out of San Fernando High School. Uh they're going to uh, in terms of me, that they're going to reach out to the city and do an installation uh exhibit for uh the clay and pottery work that they're doing.
Cool.
So uh so that's one thing too, you know, if our teachers, you know, our teachers, right? Uh we get the student signed up, uh we also provide student service, learning hours for youth, right? And so uh and and I believe we uh if they're asked to volunteer, they'll volunteer for four hours or more. Uh then you know, they're great, but they also are fed, you know, who they give in center of nutrients, you know, for a point a day. Uh and and at the same time, uh we do offer free base painting, everything is free, you know, for the youth is free. The workshops are free, uh the the base painting, the sugar skull is 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 free. And uh the Tatavi will be there behind us every year, he's always been a stage, you know, the the Latin college man. So his community has always been there, you know, and singing songs, you know, and opening. Uh so that's always very important that we try to acknowledge that this is also an event that has always advocated also healthy traditions, you know, we've always advocated health. We step away from that because that concept.
Yeah.
So uh that's one of the the wholesome aspects of uh of the San Fernando Community Day of the Dead Festival, you know? Um and and we don't have a fancy, you know, um I would say artists who sometimes exhibit. It's really the 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 schools, uh the the youth, uh and it's the community artists, uh who are, you know, work. So again, that makes it also uh very uh uh you know, freshness.
Yeah, I think the community participation is what sells it for me personally, but.
Yeah, and you know, we've had, we've, it's 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 a, it's it's had its uh unique dynamic, uh where we've had even five K in there.
Yeah.
Sometimes had, you know, Halloween kind of fusion in there as well.
Uh huh.
Or with youth because it fell on Halloween.
Yeah.
And so uh so those are things that uh you know, I think is important uh about about this community event. And and it's organized by by members of the community. And and it's in in the very beginning, it's only like four or five of us.
Yeah.
And that really is organizing the event and it allows everybody else pulling in and doing their responsibility.
Yeah, it's always a great event, I can't wait, I'm looking forward to it. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move on to our consideration to approve art mural permit, PR twenty twenty-one one five zero. Um the ad hoc committee did meet um regarding this yesterday. Um and I know that since at least August, we were first told about it in August. And the first we saw of the proposed mural was yesterday. And that and that is also in our packets attachment B, um commissioners, if you haven't seen it already. Um and this is not the mural. This, what I what I was told and what we were told at the um ad hoc meeting yesterday is that the mural mock-up here is actually just a quick sketch of what it, of of an idea. And as uh and by all means, as the ad hoc committee is here, I'm not speaking for anyone, but what we, just to kind of sum up what we discussed, and came, the conclusion the ad hoc came to was, in a nutshell, we don't know what the mural proposal is. And that that's the only bad thing. The the samples of, were given to us of the artist, who's amazing, he's a fantastic artist. Um and his art is world-renowned and and but part of our application as we're starting out as an ad hoc and as a, this is only our second mural um suggestion in in this process. And one of the things we discussed that that the three ad hoc members sort of decided, if I may, guys, please correct me if I'm misspeaking. We we were putting in line, um or we're putting down, rather, a process by which we decide on a mural. And one of those things is an example of the mural, a rendering of the mural. At the very least, eighty to ninety percent of what is actually going to be on the mural. And uh so be, so we can make an educated decision as to whether or not it accurately and respectfully represents San Fernando. Um because otherwise, we're asked to guess and sort of put faith in someone we don't know, which may be great. Um and I'm I'm reminded of these pieces, which they're fantastic, but each one is a very different style. They're all three beautiful, the examples we were given, but they all have a very, one is almost hyper-realistic, one is sort of surrealistic, one is an abstract. Fantastic, but I don't know which one of these is going to be on this mural. And so our discussion yesterday at the ad hoc was, without an example of the mural, we can't recommend to the commission to move forward. Uh we did ask Jerry yesterday to please go back and speak to the artist and or Mr. Ottega, whoever it is that has access to the artist. You know, they they, we've been asking for an example, and I know Mr. Ottega said earlier that that the artist didn't have time to provide an example, I'm really sorry. I wish he did because um clearly he's a fantastic artist. Um but we asked, go back, if they can get us something by tomorrow, I have no problem moving forward. But if the example we have to vote on is this, we did not feel as a group wholly prepared to recommend a yes vote on this at present. If they bring us something tomorrow, then we can reconvene, discuss, and we'll gather the, gather the troops and and get in for a vote, but without the actual, um you know, without the rendering, we don't know what we're voting on, and therefore we can't recommend a vote of yes. Does that sum it up, ad hoc folks? Uh I don't want to speak for anyone, but just just to kind of encapsulate what we talked about.
And any other ad hoc member would like to um add their comments or anything?
Um I, yeah, we also had talked about that, e- even though that this was also going to be uh a historical timeline, right? That um uh I know that we had concerns also about the fencing, uh right?
Right, thank you.
So we talked about the fence and then it was presented that the fence would uh would be removed and that there would be um potentially something else added into that space, correct? Right, so.
Which was not a part of the proposal.
It was not part of the proposal.
Right.
So so that was something that uh that we also talked about.
Right.
Yeah, so just to add to that, um not much actually, you you hit it right on the head. I mean, uh I want to see something there, I think it's a fantastic idea, putting something there, especially a mural of of the uh of what we've been talking about. But uh again, what we have right now in front of us, and if we do move forward with those other plans of removing the chain link fence and building something there, uh that even just makes it more important that we put something there that uh that's really going to mean something. And uh and what we have in front, you know, what I have in front of me is just, it's, that just doesn't do it. So like Chairperson, he said, if we can get something by tomorrow, I have no problem in looking it over and putting a vote in.
Yeah, we we want, we all want something there, and and I think, I think the artist, uh uh you know, I, again, not speaking for anyone other than myself, I love this work. I mean, the 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 play on the Picasso's War painting with the the rendering uh of the of the approach of the missions and and also the council painting, uh these are beautiful. I just don't know which style or what is going to end up, I mean, that that's my only question and.
Are we able to put it on hold? Or does it have to be done a certain time, a certain time?
The the commission could make a recommendation to um continue this item until a rendering is provided and then you can make a vote.
Their their goal was to have it up by October fourth, right? And did you?
Um, I think before, no, October the twelfth, before October.
My apologies, okay. So I I don't know how long it's going to take him, I can't imagine he'd do it fast. But you know, the, I also know, and I mean with all respect, the first we were mentioned, this was mentioned to the ad hoc was beginning of August. So the question, my first question is, well, why didn't they, why didn't the artist give us, give the council, give the tribal council anything in the last six weeks? Like, where's that been? And I, I'm sure he's been busy on the on the, I mean, no disrespect, but it's been a long time. And I know we asked at that very meeting at the beginning of August, we all asked, yeah, get us something. In fact, we even said before the August tenth meeting, if they can get us something by Friday, because there's a time crunch, then let's, we'll put it on the agenda for August tenth. We had that conversation, and then Jerry said, well, they couldn't get it to us. Okay, well, I guess we'll put it on the September agenda, but then we still didn't have anything, so it's, I I worry, I guess.
If I may um ask, Rudy, do you know how long the um the painting or the mural will take to complete?
Uh Stanley had mentioned about a week and a half.
A week and a half, okay. So um that's, I think, plenty of time to, if the artist could get a rendering, at least a eighty or ninety percent rendering of what it potentially could look like. Uh this body could reconvene and uh vote on 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 the application.
No, I I appreciate it, you know, I'll I'll push him.
Okay, yeah, absence of that, uh they have nothing to go on, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much, yeah. So the answer to your question is yes. We can postpone it. Um and so I'll entertain a motion to postpone our consideration to approve art mural permit, PR twenty-one, twenty twenty-one one fifty, until our October meeting or if the artist can provide us a rendering sooner.
Okay.
The October meeting or.
This will be, actually, it'll be, our October meeting will be.
Second Tuesday.
The second Tuesday will be on the twelfth, which will um.
That's our next schedule, I say that because that's our next scheduled meeting.
That's, yeah.
But but we are willing to reconvene.
Reconvene.
That he gets us something.
Yes.
Sooner.
Okay, so um.
So that's, that's, so what, you want to say Friday?
I'll put a motion in to uh move forward with the mural.
The consideration of the mural.
On our next meeting and that would be.
Okay, okay, Jason made made the motion, uh we, oh, you're second in it, okay.
So.
Aye.
Aye. All right, both.
All in favor? Aye. Those opposed?
Okay, so the item has been continued until.
Yeah, or October twel- right, to our October twelfth meeting.
Or soon.
Or, yeah. Or sooner if the if the artist.
The running, you're in.
Fantastic, okay.
Event there, we have to cancel our meeting next week, you know, next month?
Um, well, hopefully not, but um what I envision is that um we will get a rendering prior to our October meeting.
That'd be great.
We could uh, we can be to just have uh this item and in.
And that's fine.
Yeah.
We're we're, we're willing to do that.
Okay.
Um but we just, you know, and I and I guess I want to say this too, for future mural applicants, terrain notwithstanding, um for future mural mural applicants, we really want to see murals in the city of San Fernando. We are really excited to approve, to see local artists, to share our cultural experience, to share the city. So we are eager to approve. We're trying to put a process in place to expedite that so it doesn't take months to get something through. And and what I've noticed in the last two applications, partly because it's new and it's a new process and we're all sort of greasing the wheels, as it were, but I've also, if the only thing that both of these application processes have in common is waiting on the mural rendering. If we had that your mural rendering, I would guess that those in the art, the in the um ad hoc would be much faster to say yes or no. Uh so, and if we do have questions about the mural, getting us a new, I would, I would put, if anyone's watching or listening or reading the transcript here, have those business owners really put the pressure on the artist to resubmit the mural design. Or, you know, whatever, if 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 we have a question about the design, or to re, or to submit the rendering, and that would expedite. It's, this is one of those cases where government isn't slowing us down. It's, it was getting the art in time so we can look at it and approve it, and because we really do want to make it happen. We really do want to make it a part of our city. Murals are are an art form in in the LA region going back several, several years. And to use that to celebrate our culture, a part of our identity, I think is a beautiful thing. So we all want to see that happen, um we just need that process to happen so that we can make it happen. If that made sense, that was convoluted, I'm sorry, Linda, I'm sure you're going to make it sound great. All right, um moving forward, our department programs, uh run us down there, Julian, with uh virtual program.
Okay, so um I'm giving you an update on the business the city has uh has done. Um uh we'll start with the virtual programming. Um we are uh slowly moving away from the virtual programming and it's doing more in-person activities and programs.
and doing more in-person activities and programs. Since mid-June, we started having onsite programming. We started at Las Palmas with a few senior activities. We limited the size to ensure the safety. We did checks and the whole protocol process that, you know, the LA County Department of Public Health protocols call for. So we are soon to do that. We are expanding now, still slowly, but are expanding to include some youth sports. We started some youth sports programming and activities there. So we are moving forward with. I'll talk now about the Department of COVID Response. Oh, excuse me, is there any questions regarding the youth, the?
Virtual programming, comments, questions?
Okay.
Go ahead.
Our COVID response, that is, again, with the lessening cases and the infection rate lowering, it's settling or responding are, again, being lessened in what we need to do. But we still do have a partnership with Core, who provides testing and vaccines at Recreation Park. Now, the times here have changed since I wrote this report. And currently now, their time is Monday through Saturday from eight to four. So they reverted back to the original time that we're doing. So that is now.
And that's just testing, correct?
No, actually, that is testing and.
Testing and vaccine.
Yes. So.
And is there?
Trying the both.
There, for the vaccine, do they need to make an appointment?
They do not. They could walk up and they'll do the appointments right there and then. But it's best if you do make an appointment and you could do the MyTurn website to make an appointment. But they will not turn away walkups. They would actually.
Do the appointment right there and then. Great. Thank you. Questions or comments from Commissioners?
Is the testing rapid?
I believe it is a rapid test. They, you take the test and you will get it by 10:00, 11:00 that evening. So we had a couple staffers go through it, right? But yes, it's a rapid test. Another COVID response that continues is the food program with a partnership with Los Angeles Regional Food Bank. We provide a food packet to our senior population on the first Monday of every month. Or it kicks to Tuesday if it's a holiday and it happened this month that it was held on Tuesday, September 7th. There's approximately 150 seniors are registered for the program. It is still a drive-through event. So that way, still, if seniors are still a little worried and mingling, so that event is there. And you, it provides food for 60 years and above. And you could register by calling Las Palmas Park, and they'll give you the information on how you could register for the program. Any questions regarding the food bank?
Nothing with food bank, but I do think it might go back to the COVID testing.
Yes.
There's no charge for that, correct?
Yes, completely free. Yes, yes.
No questions.
Okay, reopening efforts.
Okay, so like I mentioned earlier, we're doing slowly bringing back our activities and programs. We do have a set of guidelines and protocols that are in place. We're following what the Department of Public Health has issued and also what the city could safely implement with our resources. So we may be a little bit more stringent on some of the activities. So that way, we keep it safe. Like, for example, we may limit the number of individuals participating in the program where the county might say it's okay, you could have up to 100 people. We might say, no, we're going to make it a little safer because of our resources. We'll drop it down to 50, 75, something like that. So that's what we have. But the outdoor programs that we have started is our three wins fitness program, senior fitness program. And this is a partnership with CSUN. They provide the student instructors who provide various exercise activities for seniors. And this, again, is a free activity and program. And they are out there Monday through Friday from 9:00 to 10:00? No, excuse me, 8:00 to 11:00. And they're doing various types of exercises, different stations. It's all outdoors right now, and they do that. We started a tennis lesson program at Pioneer Park. This is a partnership with a private instructor who is teaching tennis. And I believe the instructor is from Mission College that is coming out there, so we do that. Our youth baseball program, we had clinics throughout the summer. And we are targeting the spring to do a youth baseball league. And hopefully, the COVID restrictions will be lessened with, you know, more people getting vaccinated and everything going. So we're targeting spring of 2022 to start a league at Las Palmas Park. Youth soccer clinics, we started those. We are doing movies in the park. We have our first movie this Friday at Pioneer. It is E.T., I believe, the movie? And yes, it is E.T. Then the next one will be October the 8th, which would be, the movie would be Bed Nubs and Broomsticks, and it's going to be at Lane Park. And then our last movie in the park will be October the 22nd at Las Palmas. And the movie is Scooby Doo, The Spookiest Tales. We are targeting programming at our different sites so we could reach the different communities. Traditionally, we had done only one park, and it's usually been Recreation Park. It was our biggest park. But we felt that going out into the local parks and smaller neighborhood parks led to having the community come out and participate in that. So we're targeting the different parks. On, every Wednesday, we have a group of seniors that take a stroll and walk. They walk around Las Palmas and into the neighborhood, and they jot down their miles and they show everybody how much they've walked. That's a pretty good thing. It's a good exercise, and we have a good crowd. You say about 10, 15 people?
Eight, and we have had it to 15 people. So it kind of varies, but I think it's a really, it's a good, it's a good thing because they want to get their exercise. And sometimes the park can be, you know, you don't know what kind of people you might run into. So when there's a group, I think there's safety in that.
Yeah, mm-hmm. So that is good. And then we are doing limited indoor programming. We've done parent and me workshops with a different type of activities, like a painting or an arts and crafts activity. We did do a painting and me workshop at Lane Park this past weekend. It was an outdoor program, but that's part of the whole, this whole series. The Lopez Adobe is reopening. Our first reopening, our first tour will be this coming Sunday. And it's going to be, the tours are from 1:00 to 4:00. Again, they're free, could come down to the Lopez Adobe. And our docents would lead a tour and explain the history of the Lopez Adobe. Our Las Palmas Fun League is continuing. This program was born out of the necessity of COVID pandemic people staying at home. And we found very well receptive, and it's going to continue either in-house, right? And think, but there's a whole lot of activities with this program. They do bingo, they do painting, they do all kinds of stuff. It's a real good, actually, they also have a pin pal where they team up a teen and a senior, and they write to each other. So that is pretty good there. And then also our senior craft programming. We do have a limited exercise program as well. But as our instructors come back and as seniors feel more comfortable participating, those were open. So we are anticipating more programs opening up in 2022. And we will advertise those activities and programs and offer them to the public to participate. Any particular questions regarding the reopening?
Commissioners?
No questions.
Commissioner Ponce?
No questions.
This is so much, I ran out of room writing. This is awesome.
Okay.
Very exciting. Our Lane Park Revitalization Project.
Okay, so we are in the Lane Park project. We are at the design phase. Our architect, design firm is M.I.G. And they have provided a 50% plan of what the design's going to look like. They're getting, the city has reviewed it and made their comments for them to go back and incorporate those comments, those ideas. And then we'll get a more detailed plan of what all the amenities are going to look like and where it's going, how it's going to be built. So we're on track. That second rendering will take about another month or so to get back from M.I.G. Then after that, we would enter into the, well, actually, it would go to council first for the final approval of all the plan, the design for the construction of the project. And once we get that approval, then we will go out to bid for construction.
Great.
So.
Questions, comments, Commissioners?
No comments.
No questions.
Great, thank you. Tutink Youth Program.
Okay, the Tutink has started their fifth cohort on December the 9th, and it's going to go all the way to February 2022. They decided to go online, continue the virtual. They felt that at this particular time point, they did not want to come back to the in-house, although they had that option to do. But they felt that it'd be better to do virtual. They are meeting every now and then on Saturdays. They do come into the park and do a program and so forth. But their bulk of the programming is still online. They've done, again, various activities and programs. They've gone to the Rancho Muleos Museum in Fillmore. They helped rebuild a Titavian interpretive village. And they do different type of workshops. And they, that particular project is going to continue and expected to be completed in December 2021. So this activity, again, it provides an outlet for the participant to enter into outdoor activities. They go to different state parks, recreation areas, all with the emphasis of showing the participants that this land belonged to the Titavian tribe and native peoples. And to reinforce that, giving the youth a sense of identity, a sense of ownership. And the reports backed by the tribe, I mean, by the Titavian staff said that they have had very great results and positive results from its participants. Any particular questions regarding the Titavian youth?
Commissioner Ponce?
None here, thank you.
Commissioner Arretta?
No comments.
No, no comments from me either. Our Community Theater Program.
Now, this one, I apologize. I haven't been able to set up a meeting with that. But I am going to do that, to get a meeting, to get those individuals interested in participating in the program, to reconvene and put the idea in and seeing how we could start the program again.
Great.
Unfortunately, I haven't done it, so.
All right. Send the email, we'll be there.
All right.
If we build it, they will come.
All right.
All right, our General Commission comments. Commissioner Ponce?
None here. I'm good.
Commissioner Arretta?
I have none.
Great, I don't either at this time. Staff communication. Linda, anything we need to?
I do have something I'd like to share.
Yes, please.
The city celebrated its 110th birthday on August 31st at the Lopez Adobe. And I don't know if everybody, anybody had a chance to attend, but it was very well attended. It was a beautiful event at the Lopez Adobe. We had great entertainment with the MMAP students. We also had Ballet Folclorico Olín. They did a wonderful job. And a music group called Full Clip. It was, people just started dancing, it was really nice. And I thought it was just beautiful. I mean, I was there to work, but I felt like I was at a party.
Nice.
And then we also had, there was free tacos that were sponsored by El Faro Tacos and Crazy Corner. And they were really good. Pandulce and free guided tours of the Lopez Adobe. So I think people really enjoyed it. I saw lots of families out enjoying the evening, and it just turned out to be beautiful. There is an update on the monthly city manager's report. I don't know if you got a chance to see that. I can, I'm happy to forward it to you. It's got some pictures of the event.
Yeah, please, I haven't seen that.
Oh, okay, I will forward it to you. It's usually released on the city's website and on social media, but I'll be sure to send it to you.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
All right. With no other further comments, I will adjourn at 7:34. Thank you, everybody, for coming.